Secondary School Media Center, we'll start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call Vincent.
Here.
Sauer.
Here.
Sandstead.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
And Gross.
Here.
And Josh is not with us this morning. Um, do we have any visitors that would like to make comments?
Me too.
You you want to do it in the visitor time?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
She'll be, you'll be, you're going to do the RIN committee, is that right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we'll get to that in just one second. You look at your agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then they'll get into committee reports and now we'll take your RIN report. Mrs. Nye.
Good morning, everyone. Um, my name is Jennifer Nye and for those of you out there, um, I am the music director up here at Secondary, but I'm also a part of the RIN team that went to San Diego this summer. And I'm now helping out with the ninth through twelfth grade RIN high school team. And these three are part of our RIN team.
Ms. Nye, could I just, just because this is new, could you just explain for for our viewers what RIN team, what RIN stands for, please, just?
Will you help me out, Mr. Brownlow?
Because it's short for Renaissance.
Oh, yes, okay, yes, okay, the Renaissance.
Just so we make sure that everybody understands.
For a second, it was really early this morning, okay, yes, the Renaissance team, um, that we went to at Justin's in San Diego, um, team building, bonding, uh, with our school, with our staff, and, uh, we spent the three days down in San Diego, um, myself and a few other teachers, Mr. Brownlow and the two principals, and we went down there, we spent a few days down there, um, learning about helping, um, our community building with our staff and our students. And part of the goal of that was to eventually come up here and pull a team together of students of all varieties, um, just with different backgrounds and, um, different learning levels, different varieties, all kinds of kids, um, and to get them together. There really was no specific, um, you could be in it if you wanted to, uh, but basically, Mr. Wood and I just went down a bunch of lists and we just kind of clicked a few and we started that way, sent out some emails. Kids could say yes, no, maybe, and we started with that, then as things started going, um, we had some kids come up and say, can I be a part of that? We were like, sure. And then as we started going, we were like, oh, there's another one, there we go. And we had some teachers say, how about that one? We were like, yep, let's go, and we asked them, and so, um, we wanted to start small this year and it just recently just started budding in, within the last few weeks, and so we just started taking off with that. Uh, super excited, we have about twenty right now and we started a few projects. And, um, these three that are up here today, um, have just kind of started out as, um, these two started out first, uh, as being two that Mr. Wood had asked to be part of the Shields Up for John in that committee to help make those, um, little bit add that to our branding already that we have to bring to that theme. Do you want to go ahead, Jasmine? I'm going to have them talk to you too, but this is top secret, please do not share. These are our stickers. Mr. Brownlow told me I had to tell you that. Um, these are the stickers we've been talking about that the students will receive, uh, when they get things like perfect attendance in a quarter, um, GPA, high GPAs, um, when they receive Fine Arts Student of the Month and they receive all these other accolades. Throughout, am I missing anything, Mr. Brownlow?
No, but it doesn't have to be just perfect attendance, I think we were shooting for ninety-five percent.
Okay, okay, yes, ninety-five percent, I'm not in charge of that part, so, uh, but yes, um, so those are the top secret. They were a part of that, they met with John.
Jensen.
Jensen, um, they were in those meetings this summer. They were also in the meeting that we had here in school for that. So I'm going to let them, we'll get back to Michael in just a minute, um, um, so I had asked them to see if they could come, um, to start with. We're going to have various members throughout, you get to see us a few times at your board meetings, but I'm going to have these two, um, tell you a little bit of their names and a little bit about why they wanted to be on the RIN team and, um, here you go, here's Molly.
Good morning, my name is Molly Rhea Betterman. Um, as Mrs. Nye said, I was part of the Shields Up meeting and now I'm part of this meeting in the RIN team. Um, as she said, Mr. Wood sent me out an email saying that this sounded like something I'd be good at and I love trying new things, I like taking leadership opportunities because I think it'll look nice on my college application. And it also just broadens my spectrum and I can like see what everyone else is doing. And when I went to the first meeting, they said stuff about how when they went to San Diego, there were students teaching them classes and that sounded really cool. And I was like, okay, well, like that, there's like a lot of students that can feel like teachers don't hear them and like I think that this is something that will help with that. And then they also said that this team is something to, should put a shine on people that aren't in sports. And I know sports are super big in our school and everyone focuses on sports and I think it'll be a little nice just to like focus on people who aren't in sports that might want the spotlight a little bit too, so, yeah.
Uh, good morning, my name is Jasmine Polrick and I decided to be a part of RIN team similar to her. Mr. Wood reached out to me and said, this is something that I think you would be good at and I, I like taking leadership opportunities just as much as she does. So it was nice to do something new and like put some spotlight on people who aren't in sports who deserve the recognition just as much.
Okay, um, and so, so we want to be really clear, we love spotlighting our sports as well, um, but it it is an opportunity to spotlight everybody and their achievements, attendance, um, fine arts, academics, um, so it's really great. Um, we'll be showcasing, uh, those students coming up here, uh, real soon before Thanksgiving as well. And, um, one of those things that we were able to bring to life, if you get a chance to just check out, is the cabinet up there, we're waiting for a sign, but the Fine Arts Student of the Month is now officially active. It's been active, it was October and November. October, we had our Art Student of the Month with Delilah and, and then this month, that was the art. And then this month was drama and that was Milo. And so next month will be a music and we'll rotate and then those will get, be, um, announced also when we have our rally, um, and then they will receive something special as well from the fine arts. So, um, lots of recognition coming up for those students as well. Uh, and then we started, uh, we were super excited, this has been fun, this has been our big project the last week or so, and that's our gratitude tree up there. We hope that, uh, you would be interested in filling out a leaf before you go. You do not have to, just like we tell the kids, but we pretty sure that you might have something that you're grateful for. Um, and what we did was we asked the advisory, our homeroom teachers, to pass out a leaf and ask the kids if they might put down something that they're grateful for. Some put down Fortnite, you know, that's okay. Um, and then what we did was the kids, I just gave them an idea and Jasmine kind of took control and they went over there and they made a tree and we took the leaves and then throughout the, we have a tall guy here, him and Aaron Biss, kind of tall guy, and Jacob Steiner, they're in our group too. And they're the tall guys and they put the black paper up and they've been putting up the, um, the leaves as they've been coming in and they look like they're falling down the trees though. We'd love for you to check that out. So it's really, really neat to see all the things that the kids are are thankful for and, uh, we've been just putting them down, teachers have been putting them down, so it's a really cool thing. And I know they've done something very similar in the elementary too, if I, if I believe so.
Two walls there, yeah.
Yep, and so that's been fun, it was really fun watching just the guys put up the letters yesterday on the wall to make it accurate, they were very specific, so that was fun. So speaking of that, I'm going to let you, let this young man, he has a little bit different story of how he joined the RIN team.
Um, good morning, my name's Michael Gerard. Um, I was sitting in the library, uh, a couple days ago, maybe a week ago, and she came in and asked Aaron Biss for help and Aaron was busy, so I offered to help and then I, I never, I didn't know what RIN team was and then, so I kind of asked and I thought it was kind of a cool idea to show appreciation for kids who don't get as much recognition, uh, for their academics and attendance and that kind of stuff, so I, I thought it'd be fun to join.
So Michael came to me, goes, how do I become a part? And I go, you just are a part, would you like to be a part? He goes, may I be a part? And I said, you're a part of the team. And so that's Michael's, uh, experience on being a part of the team. So, um, so that's our beginning, we have a couple other things these kids have done. Um, there was a breakfast before a Veterans Day program and they served breakfast to our veterans. Uh, and I was preparing for the music part of the program, but, um, from what I understand was very successful. Do you want to share on that at all, Mr. Brownlow?
I think the part that showed to me is just we have kids, well, first of all, they all introduce themselves, right? I think and not everybody does that, they just start talking, so I think they've got great skills that way, but they just took over and took the lead of serving the breakfast. I don't always delegate very well, so that I'm trying to do those things and I get in the way and bog things down and they just took it over and said, hey, here's what we're going to do. They were very respectful and did a great job from start to finish.
And then, um, hopefully this Friday, we're gonna, we were asked, um, Caitlin asked us if at the elementarys, like we do a High Five Friday here, she asked us if we'd like to start doing a, um, every now and then a High Five Friday with part of our RIN team at the elementary. And so we're working on getting that organized and, um, I think, I think it's sort of she that the, the elementary kids will think that's awesome, so we're going to be starting that. And we've got a couple of other things up our sleeves for the teachers as well. Um, and so we'll keep you posted on that and we'll bring some other kids with us and, but it is, uh, National American Education Week and we just want to thank you guys for being a part of our education, their education. So this is just a little treat, thank you very much for being a part of our education and, um, listening to us today, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I think the other important piece to recognize that with a little bit too is just growth, any students that we see growth in, so I think that's a, a key component, as we see growth and improvement, we want to make sure we recognize those folks and, um, I know the starburst stuff that comes all from Ms. Nye, she's probably one of the most gracious people, persons you'll meet and so thanks to them for, for doing that. But we got a great group of kids, we want it to be open to everybody, um, to get some leadership opportunity and they'll be able to do that and so we'll just continue to see things grow and move forward.
Great. All right, well, that brings us to our business manager, good morning, Tanya.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, and Paul, do you have the spreadsheet up or?
They have it on their computers or really I can, I can also pull it up here real quick.
Okay, Paul, great. Um, well, since we're done with the audit now, um, I came with the first, um, presentation for this fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So, um, the report shows the, um, it's pretty much a cash basis, where our numbers are in comparison to budget as of October thirty-first. So, um, the first sheet shows all of the general fund. So in the green is the budget that was approved in June. So for revenue, twelve point two million in the general fund, expenditures, twelve point four million. So we are projecting a decrease in fund balance, but, um, we will do revisions later and then we do budget conservatively, so most likely the result will be better than that. So, um, looking at the numbers for October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, we've, for revenue, received one point nine million in comparison to budget, fifteen point nine percent of our budget. And in expenditures, we've spent three point one million compared to twelve point four million in budget, so twenty-four point nine percent. So, um, we are in alignment with what has happened in the past. Um, so the past for revenue, fifteen point nine compared to sixteen point five of the year prior. And then expenditures, twenty-four point nine compared to twenty-five point five the prior year. So, um, no concerns in the budget at this point. So that's the general fund. Then on the second page.
Can I just ask a quick question? Just to clarify that, twenty-twenty-three, is that still that, uh, where it was reported different? Is that why that one's so much higher? Or was there something different in, is that, yep.
That one I say is an anomaly, yeah, I don't, don't really know why.
Remember, Tanya, I think that's when we had Freshwater helping a little bit and remember they, um, received all the receipts right up front and booked it, I think, right away, is that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, they booked all the receipts, remember, right from the very beginning, out of the gate they do that, knowing that that revenue is coming, so they, they booked it right away instead of throughout the year.
Okay, good to know, because I did notice thirty-one percent seemed unusual for me at this point. So, but it was comparable to, so in twenty-twenty-four, we must not have Freshwater anymore?
That is correct.
So, okay. Okay, good question. Any other questions on the general fund?
And Tanya, maybe just to clarify a little bit more, like you said, we conserve, we can budget it conservatively, so we do anticipate being very close to net neutral. I think the biggest one is just our special education funding is always so volatile and that's the one that can change on us, but we're very conservative there, so we anticipate additional revenues coming in. We'll still have to revise for our student enrollment, uh, which I think might be a little bit less than what we were anticipating. Uh, but yeah, when you look at that right away, you think, boy, how did they start that way? But that, we do have a plan in place for that.
Right, yep. So then, the second page lists all the other funds, food service, community ed, debt service, trust, custodial, um, nothing I concern at this point compared to the budget. So food service, eleven point five percent in revenue compared to eleven point one in the previous year and, um, expenditures seventeen point three compared to nineteen point one. So all those percentages are very comparable to previous years, ex, with the exception of revenue on the twenty-twenty-three year. So overall, the budget that we adopted does show that four hundred sixty thousand five ninety deficit, but like we said, two hundred sixty-six of it is general fund, which we would hope would be, um, more neutral. And then the remaining is community ed that we typically do overspend.
But hoping with our pathway scholarships, um, with the work of preschool staff, getting that information out there that will have a little less negative impact in that fund.
Correct, and we'll be working, Paul and I will be working on a revised budget, looking at enrollment and looking at the settlements, so we should be coming up with, um, and then, yes, we'll add the voluntary pre-K and the pathways money in there to see where we'll be sitting then. Any other questions?
Any questions for Tanya? Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
That brings us to our superintendent report.
Okay, um, so last Friday, we dug into our professional development PLCs. The elementary staff worked through their reading curriculum wonders and, uh, had some pieces led by Ms. Hendricks. In the secondary school, we've been working, as Mr. Wood said, at the last meeting on our PLCs, which include the Anxious Generation book. Uh, you may want to borrow a copy of that from the school because that does help, I think, people understand the purpose of cell phone policies in schools and so he does kind of have some, um, some guidance provided there of where maybe there should be no access to where there's a gradual increase in access to cell phones and I think it's really just that, that part of socialization, right, that we've become so separate and now technology replaces that, relationships can be difficult to, to create, um, and so we want to make sure we're doing that. So we have three groups that are going through that book study and, and will bring back something together as a compilation to say, hey, after reading the book, these are the pieces. Um, I know Kar is working on something, I think, through the youth council as well for parents and families just to kind of see, um, so some are doing a book study there, uh, but they'll probably be bringing back some stuff from our staff, um, and the whole purpose is to bring things back to the board to say, hey, these are some recommendations for systemic change that we would like to, um, have the board consider. There may be some cost to some of those things, I always know that budget's one of the things on the forefront, but we have another group that'll be, um, surveying our students to see if there's activities out there that maybe we don't offer that might garner more student connections. Uh, we have another group looking at the reach program, they're going to, um, look at a few kids to say, okay, if we put these strategies in place, goal setting, um, tracking and things like that, does that help our students with attendance, does it help them with their grades at the end of each quarter? They'll be reporting that back. And then our last group is really looking at attendance to see, what are the attendance pieces? Are there barriers? Are there pieces why we can't get kids to school? What are the pieces that we need to, to look at? That's one that we might be able to, uh, work with some of our student support aid that comes through the district but goes to our, our cooperatives, either Midwest or Lakes Country, there's forty thousand dollars for each school. You have to partner with another school, but maybe we look at another social worker with that school to just focus on the attendance piece, to say, what barriers do we have? Why are students not able to make it to school to hopefully improve our attendance, um, in school here at WCA? So that's what they're looking at, um, the, the real plan is to study those things, investigate, evaluate and then bring that information back to the board. Like I said, I know the one group's ready to put out a survey, um, there was a couple of questions that they were still kind of tinkering with and things like that, but hopefully we'll have some good information to bring back and, and then from there, we'll eventually get, till we get to the content, you know, there. And that's really what PLCs focus on and that'll be our greater focus down the road, but wanted to start with this piece here, uh, to get kind of a fresh taste of that, to move forward with that. And then the school musical, if you were able to make it, you saw a fantastic show, I'm just amazed with the talent that we have in our district and those kids absolutely nailed it. So thanks to the, the directors, the cast and the crew, the set was phenomenal. And I sometimes don't know if we recognize within our own building what happens there and stuff like that. It's one of those things that can be overlooked, like I said earlier, accolades always for athletics, right? And pieces there, but to see all those pieces to come together, the set, I hope our kids understood how much work that was to get that put together and that they did a great job at the very end. So a lot of talent there and did a great job, so kungudos and congratulations to them. Um, they've already explained Justin's Renaissance, so I won't need to jump into that. And then just reminder, the MSB Leadership Conference is January fifteenth and sixteenth down in Minneapolis. We do have Mr. Swatki presenting, remember, on, uh, providing a robust CTE program with community engagement. That's two forty-five on Thursday, um, so if you're able to go to one of the days, two of the days, if you want to let me know, because we would have to get things reserved, uh, here fairly soon. So if you can let me know, that would be appreciated. Parent-teacher conferences are next Monday and Tuesday. The comp day for teacher conferences is Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, of course, no school Thursday or Friday. Um, actually, the school will be closed, all of our employees have those days off. Our next school board committee meeting's December third and that also includes our truth and taxation meeting. Um, I'm not sure if the tax statements, preliminary tax base statements have went out, but that's what we're really reviewing and so, um, Tanya and I will put together a presentation that we actually received from the Minnesota Rural Education Association, but make it specific to WCA to report, um, our budget as well as why we've asked for the tax dollars we have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Brownlow? If not, we will move on to the approval of payment of claims. Mr. Porter, do you have anything for us there?
Good morning, everyone, yeah, the, uh, Maggie, um, I got to thank Maggie, she sends out a pretty good synopsis, so, what's happened in the last month as far as payments, check register, wire register and stuff like that, but, uh, one, if you're looking through the report, you might know there's three checks that were for cash and, um, they were for, what was again, again, Paul? Uh, yeah, three checks for state tennis, uh, state cross-country, the starting cash for the book fair, and then the one other item, so that, that total for the cash checks was three hundred and seventy dollars. And then the other item was the diamond doctor for softball and baseball fields, uh, Doc Gennema, so that was nine thousand ninety-one dollars. There's a lot of information in here and I, are there any questions on the, um, wire register or, um, check register?
There was a, was it home of ball service, there's two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, is that?
That's the November, November relative. That's the November roll charge.
It's the November roll charge.
Two hundred and twenty-one, uh, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Was there a catch-up on there too, I think, was there, I think, a catch-up from one of the other months potentially with the special trip?
Yeah, we had, um, they did not give us the September trip invoice until ten twenty-two, so there's two trip invoices and then November roll charge.
So we all are.
Seven five thousand dollars in each.
Yes, our vans was catching up there because that wasn't ready to go by the time we paid the board bills the last time and then the November. One of those areas that we continue to evaluate and remember, we do now have one of our vans transporting students, so hopefully that'll alleviate some of those pieces there as well and create some efficiencies and save some dollars.
The, um, the printer, Liberty, the, it was sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-six cents for copies over our contract. I don't know how that, you know, we, we've had, we've talked about that before.
Now, I think we've installed.
Kevin has information on it.
We've installed Paper Cut, right, so we'll be able to track that a little bit better, but yeah, it's the color copies is our, is our big one, so they.
So we, we did decrease from the year before, so we're moving in the right direction. We've made additional changes, we've also, um, altered our contract with Liberty to better match our use of color and black and white. Um, traditionally, we've always contracted a lot of black and white and last year was our first year, we didn't use all the black and white we contracted for, so we reduced that. We increased our contracted color prints, um, to still expecting decrease, but that pre-contracted price is going to be less than the overage cost, so it'll save us some money there. Um, but we have made some adjustments and changes, so that should continue to decrease.
All right, any other questions there?
So the, I'll give you totals here, total checks was five hundred, three thousand, one thirty-five and eighty-eight cents. Total wired payments of six hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-four and fifty-two cents. And that brings a total of one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents. And then we have our donation approval coming up as well.
Would you like to make that motion, Mr. Porter?
I will make a motion that we approve our payment of claims.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, the consent agenda, you'll see, uh, in your packets, the minutes for October fifteenth, November fifth, um, and November twelfth, uh, no, November fifth Buildings and Grounds Committee and November twelfth, regular committee meeting. Um, we also have the final reading of the following policies, uh, six-ten field trips, six-twelve point one, development of parent and family engagement policies for Title I programs, six-thirteen graduation requirements, six-fourteen district testing plan and procedure. Um, it looks like that closes out our consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on any of those items? And I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. And. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us into new business. Resolution accepting donations. We have the following donations. We have Barrett Fire Department for twenty-five hundred dollars for auditorium updates. South PTO, one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents for field trips from twenty twenty-five. Sean McGee Grow Green, five hundred dollar corporate partner donation. Lang Plumbing and Heating, six hundred dollar corporate partner donation. Minnesota FFA Foundation, two hundred and ninety-five dollars for Ag Tech Day transportation. Lake Region Healthcare, one thousand dollar health field science. Star Bank, twelve hundred dollars staff shirts. Western Prairie Human Services, ten thousand dollars for region four mental health. Kensington Fire Relief, five hundred dollars for the robotics donation. South PTO, two hundred and fifty dollars for Johnston's Renaissance. Wooden Link Vineyard, seventy-five dollars for an ag donation. Uh MPH Motors, one hundred dollar robotics donation. Cosmos Enterprise, two hundred and fifty dollar robotics donation. Cosmos Enterprise, two hundred dollars for the North KG KG donation?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten donation, okay, got it. Elbow Lake Fire Relief Association, fifteen hundred dollars for the Johnston's Renaissance. Elbow Lake Fire Relief Association, two hundred and fifty dollars for wraparound care. Elbow Lake Fire Relief Association, two thousand fifty dollars for a robotics donation. Elbow Lake Fire Relief Association, two hundred and fifty dollars for stage and fine arts donation. Elbow Lake Fire Relief Association, five hundred dollars for the back skip ball hoop backlighting. Elbow Lake Fire Relief Association, nine hundred dollars for baseball and softball scoreboard bases, scoreboards and bases. And Elbow Lake Fire and Relief Association, five hundred dollars for changemakers. And also the WC volleyball boosters, thirty-two dollars and forty-two cents for volleyball awards. Are there any questions on any of those? That's a lot of great donations. We really appreciate those, so we don't want to make light of that. And I would look for a motion to adopt that resolution. And a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Gross?
Yes.
Porter?
Yes.
Sandstead?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
And Vincent?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Then we will move on to uh award agreement for pre-referendum construction management services. Just to start out with, I thought we had four excellent candidates. I don't know that, you know, we, I think the Buildings and Grounds Committee did an excellent job in bringing us some really qualified candidates for our uh interviews last night. I don't know if anybody else have any comments on any of the, they they just all really came and presented well. I don't think that any one of them is a, was a bad, would have been a bad selection.
They're all great companies.
So. Any other comments on any of that? Mr. Brownlow, anything you'd like to add to that?
Oh, I would agree. I think the, I think the work that the Buildings and Grounds Committee did to review and everything, and I mean, we started with eight and to narrow down to one, so I think it's positive to see that we have that much interest in in doing something here at WCA. And I think your work in evaluating that down to one, which uh took some time to get down there, but that's good. Um and so I think, yeah, working with Carl Sanderson would be a good choice.
Yeah, so I guess I would look for a motion to approve.
And it's kind of just moving forward, they'll come back then with a contract. I did clarify that with um Brent last night, and he just said, yeah, he said, no, you're just giving a preliminary saying we're going to reach out to them and we'll iron out the details and bring something to the next meeting.
So we'd be looking to enter negotiations with Carl Sanderson for construction management services.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then also, we'll would like to approve the master agreement between West Central Area School District and Wid Seth. And again, this is basically just confirming our intent to use Wid Seth through this process.
Yeah, they kind of helped us with that adequacy study, and so we kind of ran to the end of that piece. And now as we look at building planning and stuff like that, to move forward through that process, they would just like a preliminary arrangement there. No dollars have been set, we're not locked into anything. I just want to make sure that we didn't lock into something and they say, well, our rate is now twelve percent or something like that. No, that still becomes negotiable. It's just saying that we're not gonna have them do all this work and then say, oh, now we're gonna go with a different company and and for them, you know, that way. So again, there would be a formal agreement later on to say, here's the fee structure and stuff like that. But right now, it's just engaging them to move forward with our construction management firm.
Any questions, comments on that? And I would look for a motion to approve a preliminary agreement with Wid Seth. And a second?
Second.
Go again. Claire.
Claire was faster.
Claire, okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh that brings us to our compulsory education report.
Yep, and so families who um homeschool do have to submit their paperwork uh during the fall. And so that's why you'll see some that are compliant, and we just have a few that we mark as non-compliant. We haven't received the paperwork. Sometimes it's a cleanup to find out that maybe that family's no longer here as well. Uh but again, some large numbers there of students at homeschool. And I think Claire has mentioned in the past that we need to do some outreach there to see if there's anything that we can do to attract those families. I was just gonna do some quick math here. Three, seven, twelve, twenty-seven, thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-eight, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-nine, fifty-two, roughly sixty students that are our students that live in our district boundary that are being homeschooled. That doesn't account for any students that are, you know, maybe going to a private school. We don't have a private school in our district, but if they do attend another private school, there's no reporting from MDE on that either unless they would fill out this report, but we don't get anything from those schools there. So yeah, about sixty students at homeschool in our district. So again, nothing to approve there. It's just something that we have to submit to the state by December first, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Do we have a plan for outreach? Do we have a preliminary date that you'd like to have some type of outreach done by?
We we talked about doing something this fall, and I think with the other pieces that all stepped forward, that didn't happen. But I think maybe um possibly here in January, getting some stuff out there, I think some social media pieces. But again, I think probably next summer, saying here's some of the opportunities. And we have great things here. We just talked about the the musical. We've got our great CTE program, music programs, activity programs, great classes within our building too, you know, for some of those families that say, hey, you know what? I was able to get my child through tenth grade science, but now that we get to chemistry and physics, is there an opportunity there? So I think one, we'll get some uh some type of documents ready to go and push that out so families can see what we would have available here and then try to invite them into the building as well sometime just to kind of get a flavor of what we offer at WCA.
And can you?
And I didn't expect probably a, you know, a set date thing. Just I guess what I'm getting at is, I guess what I am asking is, then can, can we ask that, or border that? But can we set a goal to say, we want to, like, this is something we're gonna do and we're gonna try and do it by this.
Right, yep.
With other things that we do.
Yep. Does that fall through maybe our PR committee a little bit, do you think? Claire, would that be something there as PR? I mean, it's a little bit different, but um maybe not.
A lens, I guess, I I think, you know, sixty isn't too many to do a custom conversation with people and figure out how to do that.
Sure.
And really, here, you know, do they understand that you, that you don't have to be full-time here? You can come at one class or two.
Guess that was gonna be my question, we can make.
Seth meeting will be in the quieter room.
We could make uh, make it clear that it it's not really, you don't have to come for everything.
Right.
Right, you could come for physics and you could come for Fayette and and you wouldn't, you don't have to come for a full day, right?
Yeah, I guess, really, it's what, you know, the principals think or the teachers. But I just think not to do a survey and ask that, 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 but just have a conversation and say, hey, we just would like to visit with you and um, you know, you're welcome to come in and tour the sites. We could do it on the phone, I could stop by your house, just that personal piece. And that's a good receipt as well, right? So.
Well, maybe a letter going out, just informing them that we have these things and if they'd like more information or stuff like that.
I think you could do a letter, but I think we need to reach out. I don't think we need to say, I I would like to see us not say, call us if you'd like. I'd I'd like to say, you know, we we want you to know that we'll be contacting you sometime to to talk with you about what opportunities are at WCA and then we initiate.
Sure.
See what, if there's reasons why they're not coming, if there's things that we could do better, is it part of half and half of the only?
I just think it's a conversation more than a really highly structured question. You know, we would have some talking points and questions, but not.
I'd just like to see it on the plate, like, if it's a goal so that we continue to work for it and don't come next year at this time when we get this report and we haven't gone any further.
Sure.
Come back and say, oh, we gotta get, we gotta get on that, right?
Yep.
Nope. Okay, maybe that's something you could throw into your report, Paul, for us, just a update on.
I will do that.
Any progress?
We could throw it on, throw it on an agenda coming up, you know, that we revisit it and just get it, you know, have the conversation in front of everybody, in front of the camera, hey, we're, this is what we've done so far.
And, you know, I I'm gonna guess there's sixty kids, but probably thirty-five families.
Correct, yep, yep.
So it is less of a personal contact number than, you know, I don't know what that exact number is, but most of those people don't just have one kid.
Right, no.
Okay, any other questions, comments on the re- that report? Then we would move to the community education report.
And so Mr. Ryan put this together, this is again, is an annual requirement and was submitted to November first. But again, just bringing that to your attention of the different programs that we have through the community education piece. And Darren, are you the board representative on community ed or is that Kayla?
I don't think I am anymore.
I think I am.
I was.
Okay, so we'll make sure, I'll follow up with Mr. Ryan too, to make sure that we've got those meetings. As you see, there's four meetings that are required, so we'll make sure that we get that taken care of there. But yeah, that's just kind of for your review to see, of course, this would include anything outside of the school day activities. A lot of those things, you know, we have taken care of through the booster club on different pieces, but it does include our um, you know, our summer school. Um it could be any extended day tutoring if we want to do that. I know we've not done that for a while. Um I think it was offered for a little bit, then the turnout wasn't real great. But I think that's, again, when we talked about that survey earlier, remember, we eliminated the late bus um because we didn't have high utilization or good utilization. But that might be one of those barriers that's identified where kids say, I can't participate in activities because I don't have a way to get home. And I think if we've got a more uh, some good da- data to look at that way, we may say, you know what? We'll figure out some ways to to provide that or maybe it's certain days, different things like that. And, you know, for some of these programs, that would be beneficial for our students. I think that's what we want to look at, see if there's, of course, within reason of our budget, but trying to find opportunities for everybody to connect here at WCA.
Well, is is that something that that our van could be utilized? You mean, like, if you're gonna tutor, you run it, you know, now we pay you to run the shuttle, you know, you shuttle back to a town or whatever, and you're right, there wasn't very many kids that I would think the last time.
We were running fairly empty buses, yeah.
I don't think we got any pushback. I never heard anything about anybody upset that there wasn't an option.
I think Mr. Fosley had a few questions, but I think they understood as well. I mean, I think they, I think one of the comments was, I get it from a financial perspective, it's just inconvenient for our family. But I realize if there's only two or three riding it, it's not real cost effective. But, you know, if we, again, look at that, we identify that's a barrier for twenty students. And we say, okay, now we just need to make sure that we use it if we're gonna put it in place. How do we utilize it and get good returns on that?
All right. Any questions, comments on that report? That brings us.
Looking for discussion, Maya?
Nope. I'm looking for.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
Motion carries.